Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now proceed with today's public participation session. Just in preview of that, I do believe we have a couple of public officials who do want to speak to us today and currently tied up in city council, so I hope you all respect the fact that if they do get here that I will interrupt our regular flow to give them the opportunity to speak with us this morning. And with that, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, our first group of speakers will be Speaker Number One, please.
I think I understood that Clarice wanted to speak with us. Is Clarice here?
Yes.
Clarice Berry, please.
Yeah. Good morning, Clarice.
Thank you very much, and good morning to President Vitale, board members, CEO Bird Bennett, CPS staff. Board members, you have each been sent the most recent annual report of the General Assembly Chicago Educational Facilities Task Force concerning the Chicago Board of Education's school actions and master planning for the 2012-2013 school year. The CEFTP, which I will herefore refer to as the Task Force, was responsible for assessing the Chicago Public Schools' implementation of reforms enacted by the General Assembly in 2011. The Task Force consists of members of both parties appointed from the General Assembly, appointees from community groups, other appointees as per statute, namely, members of the Chicago Public Schools, the Chicago Teachers Union, and the Chicago Principals and Administrators Association. The Task Force has spent countless hours gathering testimony from Chicago Public Schools' parents, community members, students, CPS staff during numerous public hearings, committee meetings, and from the state-supported public website held by the Task Force. The Task Force has asked for and studied documents and data supplied by the Chicago Public Schools staff. The Task Force has sought out and researched best practices from other urban school districts around the country. The Task Force has been instrumental in advocating for reforms in Chicago Public Schools that improve management and decision-making about school facilities and the implementation of broad school actions. What major changes resulted from the creation of this Task Force? A, a December 1st meeting date, a December 1st date for public notification about proposed CPS school actions. Also, a public due-process hearings around school actions and the development of support plans for students undergoing school transitions. And importantly, the creation of a long-term, 10-year education facilities master plan. The report, now in your hands, details the factors that led to the legislation creating the Task Force. The report outlines the processes employed to gather input and make recommendations to the Chicago Public Schools. The report outlines the mistakes, missteps, and omissions that can and should be avoided to allow for full transparency due to the citizens of the City of Chicago. The report looks at CPS data and draws conclusions about its value, its impact on decision-making, and in some cases, its misuse. The report weighs in on policy decisions that have long-range implications and how those decisions will impact public education in the City of Chicago. Most importantly, the Task Force hopes, in particular, this board and the mayor's office will use these findings to evaluate the performance of the Chicago Public Schools now and in the future. I cannot overstate the importance of this report and the work that supports its conclusions. Thank you, and I hope you read the report and that we get some feedback from you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Clarice. Okay, Madam Secretary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first group of speakers then will be Speaker Number One, Mr. President Jackson Potter, followed by Speaker Number Two, Helen Alexander, then Speaker Number Four, Joel Rodriguez, and Speaker Twenty-Four, Carolina Rivera, please.
Good morning. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Chicago Teachers Union today. I wanted to first address a concern that's been in the media. A few months ago, Vice President Ruiz mentioned a concern that if you were to deny Concept Charter, there are two school proposals for this coming fall, there is a fear that the Illinois Charter Commission would overrule that decision and divert resources away from the district. That sounded the alarm, and we cannot allow our district to be literally held hostage by this body. I think it's time to publicly and clearly announce the need to dismantle it, so I hope you'll consider that. I came here a few months ago, and it gives me no pleasure to say I warned you at that meeting about the imminent scandal that was going to happen at Concept Charter Network that would make Uno look like a poster child of ethical practices. And that, unfortunately, that advice was ignored. You went ahead and approved it, and now they're under FBI investigation. We cannot allow unsavory charter operators to enrich their friends with no-bid contracts and exorbitant leases. This really harms children, and instructional resources are diverted to the wrong people, and it betrays the parents' trust in you to really uphold their interests. So, we are asking you today, you should have on your desk, a resolution to revoke the two schools that were put online for this fall that have not yet been erected in Chicago Lawn and Auburn Gresham, and a moratorium on all additional proposals from this operator until this FBI investigation has concluded. We think that's the right thing to do. You know, Mr. Bebly knows better than I what the legal frameworks are, so, you know, he could inform you whether or not that makes sense and what you're able to do, but I hope something can be done. The second thing I'd like to refer your attention to-
Mr. Potter, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
I'll wrap up.
Thank you.
So, more than 50% of our schools are without professional staff librarians. It's getting worse as the budget crisis is coming down on the school budgets. Reading is fundamental, so we need librarians to help, you know, children get really interested in using books and resources. My previous school that I taught at, librarian Ellen Damlich is here today. She was integral in my students being able to competently do independent research, and that's critical for their ability to succeed in college. We need these folks in our buildings.
Mr. Potter, thank you.
Can I mention just a couple more quick things? So, I know CEO Bennett and President Vitale, you've been looking carefully at this AUSL question. You've gone out to Gresham and some of the other, McNair, and I know that it's clear and evident to all of the community advocates and parents in those schools, DeVorec, who overwhelmingly support maintaining the existing staff. There are people with 25 years of experience who are beloved in those school communities, and they would love to benefit from the infusion of AUSL resources and strategies to improve their schools. I hope you will impress upon AUSL the need to carefully look at their policies as regards to that question. They've had a poor track record, and that can and should change. The third and the last thing I'd like to mention is this discipline code change that was announced today that you're going to vote on. And certainly the CTU, we've done a lot of work engaging our members on this question. We've passed resolutions to this effect to support these practices that you're describing, and we philosophically agree with much of what's in the new standards. It's great to aspire to more adequately address the behavior issues that come up in schools with constructive and meaningful student engagement and strategies, but if these policy changes occur after the biggest budget cuts in a generation, this year and last year, then there's not the personnel available to conduct the necessary interventions and really provide the support that students need and deserve when they do have traumatic situations or behavioral infractions. And short of that, you know, this is a wholly inadequate response. And to the problem, we have woefully inadequate staffing levels in terms of social workers, school psychologists, counselors, and nurses, and that has to be part of this strategy and process. Without it, it's really the cart before the horse.
Thank you.
And then, just to finish, the Consortium on Chicago School Research has looked carefully with their school climate surveys, and unfortunately, I hate to bring this to your attention, but a lot of the media releases where you're claiming victory on decreasing the number of suspensions are at the very schools that have the worst performance on the school climate surveys. So, there's some disconnect there that needs to be adequately addressed. Summer is a time for growth and renewal. I hope the board can reflect on these critical concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackson. Alderman Burns, did I-
Good morning, President Vitale, members of the Board of Education, and Chief Executive Officer of the Chicago Public Schools and staff. Good morning. I'm Will Burns. I'm the Alderman of the Fourth Ward. Last year, the board voted to phase out, or two years ago, the board voted to phase out Kanter School on Blackstone. And as a consequence of several conversations I had with community folks, a community meeting we held in the ward, I think that the future of Kanter would be best served by shifting the academic center at Kenwood Academy, which serves 7th and 8th graders, and moving that into the Kanter Building. The academic center is well-attended, racially-integrated, and well-thought-of in the High Park-Kenwood Mid-South Side communities. So, one, that means that Kanter will be sustainable as a physical building educating kids for the foreseeable future. The other part of the bargain is that we create more slots at Kenwood Academy, which is a Level 1 neighborhood open enrollment high school, one of the best in the City of Chicago, and an exemplar of what can happen in neighborhood high schools. So, I think for those reasons, I support those changes, and I would ask the board's concurrence in that.
Thank you, Alderman, and I appreciate your taking leadership in the schools and your ward and in this particular situation to get the community's support for this kind of action, and I'm sure we will look at it positively because it has positive implications for the children in the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, our next speaker then, it will be Helen Alexander. Last call for Helen Alexander. Moving on to the next speaker, please. Speaker Number Four, Joel Rodriguez. Last call for Joel Rodriguez. As I call the speakers, I would ask that you please stage to your right by this blue column over here. Thank you.
My name is Joel Rodriguez. I'm an organizer with the Southwest Organizing Project. A few months ago, I presented this board with hundreds of signatures from parents, teachers, and students in a petition asking you, the board, to not approve concept schools to open in the Chicago Lawn community. Our leaders did not sign this petition with a bias towards concepts nor charter schools. They did so recognizing that concept does not address the current needs of our communities, nor do they provide opportunities that our community schools are already providing. This was not only the sentiments of our leaders, but the knack that reviewed these proposals felt the same. The whole process in which concept was approved is questionable, and it left our community questioning if their voice was even a factor when these types of decisions were made. Before being approved, concept schools were already entrenched in a cloud of controversy from having poor-performing schools to questionable ties and practices. These factors alone heightened our position, but now, with the new information emerging that concept schools is being investigated by the FBI for undisclosed criminal activities, our leaders are now more than ever determined for concept schools to not open in our community. We urge you to reconsider your decision to allow these schools to open in our community and to listen to the voices of parents and students that day in and day out are fighting to make our schools and community a place where young people can flourish and have promising futures. Our neighborhood schools are providing, are proving to be successful models of education that promote community engagement, and more importantly, community ownership over the direction of education on the southwest side of Chicago.
Mr. Rodriguez, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
I will.
Thank you.
What is needed is further investment in our current neighborhood schools. Once again, we urge you to reconsider your decision. Please don't allow concept schools to open in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker Number Twenty-Four, Carolina Rivera, followed by Speaker Number Three, Rolando Vazquez, then Speaker Number Five, Victor Harbison, and Speaker Number Six, Dwayne Trust, please.
Good morning. My name is Carolina Rivera, and I am a leader with the Southwest Organizing Project. I have three children, and two of them already graduated from Talman Elementary School. And my third one is going to be in 7th grade next school year. Talman is a very good school, as well as Morel, Carson, Nightingale, and Geishpar High School. They have a group of parents that are there every day to help the students, but I know that this is not enough. They need more resources. Talman, in particular, is a small school that had been functioning as a Level 1 school, and it is trying to expand its facilities. And I am asking you, why don't invest on Talman School? Been around Geishpar High Neighborhood for more than 10 years, I know that we don't need any more charter schools. What we really need is that you invest in the school that already exists in the neighborhood and give their students more and better opportunities to learn. As a mother of two CPS students and as a community member, I am here to ask you to reconsider your decision in supporting a concept schools and instead, give all the support to the school that are doing a great job with their students. Thank you.
Rolando Vazquez, please. Speaker Number Three. Last call. Moving on to Speaker Number Five, please. Victor Harbison. Last call. Our next speaker then will be Dwayne Trust, followed by Speaker Number Seven, Rochelle Davis, then Speaker Number Eight, Krista Williams, Speaker Number Nine, Megan Cusick, Speaker Forty, Ellen Damlich, and Speaker Forty-Eight, Marcy Marola, please.
Good morning. How y'all doing there? I'm a member of Chicago Citizens United to Preserve Public Education, and I'm here to share with you a list of recommendations as it pertains to school improvement, not privatization. We made recommendations a couple, about a month ago, that the board ethics policy should be reviewed and revamped to mitigate conflicts of interest and swing-and-door relationships between CPS and CPS vendors. The practice of reconstituting schools should be abolished. It is expensive, disruptive, and ineffective. For instance, if CPS does decide to go ahead and reconstitute a school, using your term, it is fair that you should allow other school improvement vendors, which are certified by the Illinois State Board of Education, to go ahead and bid in this process. It is totally wrong of CPS to give AUSL an inside track, which appears to be a conflict of interest, given the board of directors $64,000 of contributions to the mayor, many of these contributions made prior to him being elected to office. We do demand a thoughtful fiscal performance analysis of AUSL's performance. We get other schools trotted out as being, showing improvement faster than district average, but we don't hear about Johnson, Dodge, National Teachers Academy, Dulles, and Sherman, who scores a significantly decline. CPS should also be supporting whole-school change led internally by stakeholders already in place, being the LSEs. We need a moratorium on all school actions, including closures and turnarounds, until each school in question hears from all interested vendors or schools submit alternative plans. CPS should commit to a process of community, community teacher-driven school improvement and building the consensus with all the stakeholders, including parents, because parents are totally left out of the whole process. And one thing I want to comment on about the option schools, I want to caution you, board, to think about, is that one of the problems with neighborhood schools, considering the new policy of per-people budgeting, many of these option schools are going to be targeting students like juniors and seniors in neighborhood schools-
Mr. Trust-
-who may be a semester behind in their credits. And they might target those students because each child walks in the door with money attached to that child. So, we want the board to caution, like, when these option school vendors go out there aggressively recruiting students, they're not going into neighborhood schools targeting those students, who are juniors and seniors, who are teething on it, because we've had that problem in our neighborhood schools, especially on the west side, where students will say, hey, go to such and such career school, because you can go ahead and get out of there a lot quicker than trying to go to night school and trying to go to summer school. So, I would definitely ask that the board go back and look at that, and really, hopefully, these vendors are not out there trying to poach students from current neighborhood high schools, which will impact those schools' budget and the resources provided, a good education to our students. I thank you very much for indulging me.
Thank you, Mr. Trust. Our next speaker, please. Rochelle Davis.
Excuse me. Good morning. My name is Rochelle Davis, and I'm president and CEO of Healthy Schools Campaign. And a year ago, I peered before you when you awarded a contract for a new food service company, and I wanted to share, and I shared with you our priorities for what we hope to see in the food service program, and I wanted to provide you with a quick update. So, our first concern was that with the new program, CPS maintained their commitment to high nutrition standards, and currently CPS continues to meet the gold standard of the Healthier U.S. School Challenge. I also want to thank CPS for speaking out publicly in support of the current nutrition standards when Congress attempted to roll them back. The second concern we had was for the expansion to all schools of the local and sustainable food program and to see that increase. And you reached that milestone last October, just, you know, six to eight weeks into the school year, and this year you purchased around $3 million from local farmers, which was about 5 million pounds. And our third area of concern was to see an improvement in kitchen facilities, and we particularly were concerned about the 176 schools that were only offering pre-plated frozen meal programs, and that contract committed to making a transition. During this first year, you improved 22 sites, and we did see the expected increase in student acceptability, and you saw an average of a 16% increase in the number of students participating in the meal. You have 66 planned for the next 10 to 12 months. So, thank you very much for, it's great to see the commitment made, and it's great to see that follow-up, and needless to say, I'll probably be here next June to let you know how it's going. I also just wanted to mention that last month you honored the students from CVCA for winning the Cooking Up Change contest. They represented Chicago well and took 3rd place out of 10 in the national competition. So, thank you and have a good summer.
Krista Williams, please.
Good morning. My name is Krista Williams, and I am a proud parent of three girls, one of which graduated from under Ms. Girlies' leadership in the second class of the IB program, Ms. Michelle Clark. My second daughter is a graduate of Marshall High School and recent graduate of the University of Illinois-Champaign, Urbana. I have two more. My baby girl is still a student, and my grandson. So, I know the value of public education. I respect that. But as a single parent, I'm asking you, and I'm here to advocate, that you support the Fight for 15 minimum wage. I do know, and I've heard several times, of parents who work for, at a minimum wage, and it's very difficult for them to be involved with their children in school, some of which have to work two jobs that take them into midnight hours and over into the evening hours, not being able to help with homework or support their children, or the teachers, some of which don't even get to go and, you know, pick up report cards on days like that. So, I stand here, again, to advocate for that, asking you to support it, and if you will put it on your agenda for next month, because studies have shown that when children or families are supported, are having economical investment, that it will show an educational investment in the home, and it also shows stability in the children. So, it's imperative. We know that in most communities, especially on the west side, of which I support the Westside Against School Closings, that a lot of our parents have been affected by the school closings, the 50 school closings, our members, teachers, and who are parents of children in the Chicago Public School system are now having to take jobs at minimum wage. So, I ask you to support that initiative, again, asking if you will, and I can ask now, put it on your agenda for next month, to vote on that. Are you willing to do that? Talk about it? Maybe? It's important. I mean, I stood, I was at a meeting, a hearing that they're having citywide, and it saddens me to hear and stand, people standing crying in tears who can't buy food. They have to make a decision to pay a bill or buy a pair of shoes, or, you know, make a decision to buy a notebook instead of a gallon of milk. So, I hear you. So, we need to make sure that we address that, because these are your parents, and if I could stand here and advocate for them, it would be a big difference, and it would show a lot, if you, as the Board of Education, would invest in the parents and the process of minimum wage and Fight for 15.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker Number Nine, Megan Cusick.
Good morning. My name is Megan Cusick, and I'm a CPS librarian and a CPS parent. This year, all schools are required by CPS to include literacy as a focus area in their school improvement plans. It is particularly troubling, then, that professionally-staffed libraries, a key contributor to student literacy, are disappearing from the CPS landscape. In 2009, approximately 16% of CPS schools lacked a professional librarian. Next year, that number will surpass 50%, 5-0. Despite assurances at hearings, press conferences, in videos, and in these very chambers, and despite the tumultuous closing of 50 schools last year, the promise of properly-resourced schools continues to go unrealized. What does that mean for students? Of 50 receiving schools, 31 are without a professionally-staffed school library, including Courtney, Cullen, Harvard, and Pershing, just to name a few. At least five high schools with the much-touted inquiry-focused IB program are without school librarians: Kelly, Farragut, Clemente, Hyde Park, and Back of the Yards. Many of us watched a ribbon-cutting ceremony for CPS Chicago Public Library Partnership at Back of the Yards High School last year. Students at that school have no access to that library during the school day. What else does this mean? Hundreds of thousands of CPS students will leave this system lacking the full range of 21st-century skills that are required to succeed in college, work, and life.
Ms. Cusick, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
I will. It is at best disingenuous to say that principals are responsible for deciding whether or not to maintain professionally-staffed libraries. It is also a disservice to our students. Parents and everyone else here, I urge you to advocate for schools that offer a comprehensive curriculum, not one that forces one program to be added at the expense of another, but one that our own district leadership, and indeed, our own mayor, has indicated that every child deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cusick. Our next speaker, please. Speaker Number Forty, Ellen Damlich.
Good morning. My name is Ellen Damlich. I am a CPS teacher librarian of 12 years, and I currently work at Senn High School. Prior to that, I was at Little Village High School and Ames Middle School, proudly all neighborhood schools. This spring, a group of CPS librarians started a task force out of our collective alarm and concern for the elimination of nearly 50 CPS librarian positions. In some cases, the libraries were closed entirely. We are here to present this declaration for the right to school libraries, which underscores the fact that school libraries staffed by professional librarians are an indispensable part of a student's education. We have collected almost 2,000 signatures from students, colleagues, and parents. Even Governor Quinn signed our declaration. To provide some context, I will read from the declaration's preamble. "In the spirit of the United States Declaration of Independence and the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, we believe that libraries are essential to a democratic society. In addition to a vast array of books, computers, and other resources, library users benefit from expert teaching and guidance of librarians to help expand their minds and open new worlds. As school libraries are essential to 21st-century education, we declare and affirm our right to quality school libraries. Without a qualified librarian, one does not have a quality school library." Finally, as a representative of this librarian task force, I present these signed declarations to Marcy Merola, an officer at the American Library Association. I've also submitted a copy of this declaration to the secretary and the board. I urge all of you to sign our declaration after this meeting, take our contact information, and fight for our students' rights to professionally-staffed school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Damlich.
My name is Marcy Merola. It's a privilege for me to be here today. I am the director of the American Library Association's Office for Library Advocacy. I have a master's degree in library and information science, and I'm a product of the Chicago Public Schools. These facts are not unrelated. In grammar school, under the guidance of a school librarian, my school library was an oasis, a safe haven and a place to explore the world. But not everyone, not every student was so lucky. My high school lacked a school librarian, and it suffered from a huge dropout rate. We lost more than one-third of my graduating class, more than 200 students. Research now tells us that these things are very much related. My message to you on behalf of the ALA is simple: Fund your school libraries and restore certified school librarian positions. There's a letter from the ALA president to that effect that's being circulated. Around the country, school boards, principals, legislators, and parents are realizing that the school librarian is uniquely positioned to prepare students for the future. Last month, Washington, D.C., public schools opened 30 new school librarian positions. In Vermont, school librarians just won a long battle to ensure that the term "certified school librarian" remains a part of their statewide educational standards. In the past year, thousands of people have signed the declaration for the right to libraries because they understand these things, that school librarians are indispensable, that under their guidance at the school library, students are learning how to learn. They're building confidence in a skill set that will see them through school, into college, and into the workforce. Yet while the rest of the country begins to move forward, Chicago lags behind. While we tout award-winning public libraries in a culture of literacy, CPS's school library program continues to be decimated. The future of our youth is in question, and Chicago retains its title of murder capital. May I suggest to you all that these things are indeed related. The good news for you all is that it's not too late or too difficult to make Chicago a leader in education. I urge you to invest-
Ms. Merola-
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Can you please conclude?
I urge you to reinvest in school libraries and restore certified school library positions. We owe the students of Chicago every opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merola. Our next speakers, Mr. President, then, will be Speaker Number Eleven, please. Jose Frosto, followed by Speaker Number Twelve, Michelle Villegas, followed by Speaker Thirty-Five, Jay Armstrong, and Speaker Thirty-Six, David Gado, please. Speaker Number Eleven, please. Jose Frosto, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, then. Speaker Number Twelve, Michelle Villegas.